This conference will now be recorded.
Six o'clock. Let's go ahead and call this meeting over. Thank you, Mike, for being here tonight. First up is the adoption of the agenda. As it is approved to. I'm sorry. Got it cut off. I moved to adopt.
Okay, just repeat for the audience there I just asked for the adoption of the agenda. And.
I'll move to adopt.
All right. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. And next up is the changes to the FY 23-24 recommended budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. You have a sheet that was distributed to you that shows the changes that were made, and I'll go through these hopefully very quickly. Essentially, there's really two key things I was trying to accomplish with this. One is I was trying to identify $15,000, really just to be reserved, and it would be in the administration budget. It's basically a pot of money for the future implementation of any new career development plans or advancement plans in the town department. So I was trying to accomplish that. That seemed to be something that the board had a consensus on at our last meeting. What this does is simply set the money aside. I would expect to come back to you all sometime in the next several months with formal plans that would lay out the guidelines for how that would work and so forth. So it's really just reserving the money for that purpose. And then the other big thing is, in light of the discussion about the motor vehicle special taxes, if you recall, in the original recommended budget, I had that money allocated for street maintenance. I went and moved that back to bicycle projects. That may still be something that you want to consider changing in the future. But in order to honor the resolution that the board adopted, which I quite frankly was not aware of when I put the recommended budget together, I've made that change and simply moved that money to the bicycle path account as opposed to the street maintenance account. The other changes that are included in there, quite frankly, are a lot of like nickel and dime changes across the various departments. For example, I reduced the travel and training a little bit in administration. I eliminated the $3,600 vehicle allowance in the Development Services budget. We'll provide, used our spare police car for that person to use. Little things like that. If you want to get into the details of that, I'm happy to share them with you, but they're relatively minor things strictly with the goal of coming up with the 15,000 that we talked about. The other thing I did is I went back and looked at the local option sales tax estimate again. And literally right before I walked in here for your meeting last Monday on May 15th, I got the latest sales tax distribution. Those come in monthly, and it was $4,200 less than it was last year. And if you remember, when I explained the methodology to you, all we did was simply take what we've received so far to date and plugged in an identical amount for the remaining months of this fiscal year. And so to stay true to my methodology, I went ahead and made that change. So I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have, and if there are other suggestions that you all have or changes you'd like to see made, obviously happy to work through those with you and hopefully come up with something you'll be pleased with.
I've got a question about our sales tax. Projections. We're at 20 some odd percent, right?
In terms of the percentage of our budget?
No, the percentage of the increase in the sales tax revenue.
Yeah, so.
What pages am I on?
So, sales tax, well, there's probably the easiest thing, because there's a graph that shows the last five years, and that is on page 33. The actual details of it are on page 29. And so, for example, for fiscal '21-'22, two years ago, we brought in about 400, almost $462,000. I am projecting around $497,000 for the current year, actually minus 4,200, so about $493,000 for the current year. And that's based on what we've received to date, plus an identical amount for the last few months of the fiscal year. And then I simply applied a 2% growth rate for next year, which I think is conservative going forward. So that comes out to a revised number on the sales tax of $502,304. That's included in the documentation you have tonight.
But still, I mean, what, 20% increase?
Compared to what?
Last year. So. For the adopted versus our recommended budget?
So it actually.
I'm using rough math here, but.
Yeah, well, it comes out to about 23% when you compare it to what the adopted budget was for fiscal '22-'23. And that adopted budget was about $409,000. But that was actually about $52,000, $53,000 less than we had actually received the previous year. And so when you push it through for this year, I think we're going to finish up this year probably somewhere around $493-ish for the year, based on what we've collected to date and what's a reasonable expectation for the last few months. And then I simply applied a 2% growth factor on that. So if you're comparing it to the adopted budget last year, yeah, it's that 23% increase. But that's as we talked about, as I talked about the last time, that was because the estimate was really low at the beginning of last fiscal year, so.
So. So what is that as a percentage of the amended budget from last year?
So we amended the budget, I think it was about in August of last year, and the amended budget was $434, $637. So on a percentage basis, doing this off the top of my head, that's an increase of $65,000 out of $434, so probably 15%-ish. And I'm sure I'm off a little bit. But in terms of what we expect to bring in this year, again, it's a 2% increase over where we expect to finish the current year. We've done exceptionally well on sales tax, as have all of the towns in Cardrake County and all the counties in North Carolina for that matter.
So I'm just concerned with this 23 or whatever it is percent number. Because I've looked at some of the other towns, and their projected sales tax increase is no more than 10%, some less significant.
Yeah, so.
I'm just curious why we have such high projected sales increase compared to everybody else, you know? Because we haven't done anything different.
Yeah, so I think that's an understandable question, but what I think the missing piece of information is, is what was the number they started with in the current year? And when they refer to like an 8% increase, or 6% or 10% or whatever, what are they comparing that to? Because if they're comparing it to what they expect to bring in this year, we're coming in with a much more conservative estimate than them. And chances are, when they started the current budget year, they probably didn't have a number that was as, that was lower than their previous year, and that was as low as ours relatively speaking. So it's important to know what they're comparing it to. And again, really, the key factor in all of that is our estimate was $409,000, almost $410,000. For example, if we had started with $460, which is about where we came in when the year ended for '21-'22, we would be looking at probably an increase of about 8% over a two-year period is what we'd be projecting.
But just to say that a different way, we actually are projecting a 13, so I did the math, it was like 13.6% increase.
From the amended, yeah, that sounds about right.
We actually are projecting a 13.6% increase because that's what we've received versus what we're projecting for next year.
No, that's, that's not correct. So I don't want to confuse you all, so let me see if I can explain this a different way. I always compare our expenditures and our revenues from year to year, looking at what the board adopted when the year started versus what's recommended for the next year or adopted for the next year. Because I think that's the truest comparison, particularly on the expenditure side, right? Because what happens is during the course of the fiscal year, there are always changes that are made, and maybe you get more revenues than you thought. Maybe you add expenditures that you didn't foresee, maybe there's a special project, whatever. And so, quite frankly, a lot of people in local government would rather compare to the amended budget because it makes the increases not look as large. Because things always happen during the year, you always add things that come along. I, my entire career, don't like to do that because I think you all are setting your tax rate and making your decisions based on that original budget at the beginning of the year. So that's why I compare it to that. I think that's a much more important comparison on the expenditure side, not as important on the revenue side. And honestly, if I was your town manager a year ago, sitting right here, I would have given you a sales tax estimate that was probably around $460-ish, give or take. We brought in $461, $462 for the previous year. So it really depends on, depends on what you're comparing it to. What I'm saying is, I'm looking at what we've actually done this fiscal year, and I'm just adding the exact same amount that we got for the last few months of last year. And then that's the number I think we'll end this year with. So to me, that would be the appropriate number to compare, right? That's going to come in around $492,000. The recommended budget as revised for you is now $502,000, and it's nothing more than a 2% increase. So I don't know if that explains it a little better, and I'm.
Yeah, I misstated what we were comparing it to.
So, the $434, so if you recall, I think we did a budget amendment in August, maybe at the time I was hired. And so my salary was higher, and we were identifying funds in the budget to cover that. And an easy place to make up that money was in your sales tax estimate. Because even from that initial time with me arriving, the sales tax estimate was really low. It was way lower than we had brought in the previous year, so.
Sandy, how much sales tax have you collected so far this year? And when was your last payment received?
Our sales tax adjusted by now is $3,677,000 and $654,000.
How many more payments do you?
I guess three more, so we have April.
Three more.
How many months?
Three more left.
So you've collected nine months. Nine months. You've collected nine payments.
Nine payments. And so last April, we brought in $40,484. Last May, $41,231. Last June, $42,952. So literally, all we did was take the actual to date, the $367, $684, and add the exact same amounts as last year. Now, I think that's as reasonable enough of an approach as you could take. Might go down a little bit, might be a little more. For example, up until this most recent month, every payment was like blowing it through the roof. We were doing so much better than the previous years. And this last one came in $4,200 less than we got last year. And so sometimes, you got to keep in mind too, there's some timing issues with it. So these, when we get the sales tax payments on May 15th, that's for the amounts that the businesses remitted during the month of March, during the month of March. And it's actually based on the sales that occurred in the month of February. So there's lag time for them to report it and stuff like that. And then sometimes things get counted in one month, maybe a little short or a little too much. But over the course of the year, it pretty much balances out, and you get a reliable number.
And then he's grabbed the last few, I've got here from '18, '19, and '23, and the last few months are usually our higher. Because someone around here brings it up.
What are you anticipating your total again? Five hundred and one?
So for the current year, I'm projecting right around $493,000. And then the projection for next year just increases that by 2%, which I think is a pretty conservative growth estimate for next year.
Well, you still, your proposed budget's still 20 some odd percent higher than the last, the current budget we're under forecast.
Higher than the adopted budget by 23%.
That's right.
But it's, it's not that much higher than what we actually received the year before.
And what, you know, what Charlie, Commissioner Morgan was saying too, some of the other municipalities, like Emerald Isle's only forecasting 7.91%. Cedar Point, 10%, North Carolina League of Municipalities, 6.3%.
Yeah, so again, you really have to look at what you're comparing. So in fiscal '21-'22, we brought in $461,944. That's the amount out of your audit report, that's what's in your budget book. That was two years ago. And so for next year, I'm projecting $502,304. So that is $40,360 more. If you divide that number by $461,944, that's an 8.7% increase over two years. So it really comes out to probably, you know, 4.3, something like that. So I would, I would never ever, unless things were just like absolutely booming bonkers, I would never suggest that you should increase your sales tax estimate by 23% over what you actually got from year to year, unless there was something really special that happened, which I've never seen.
Well, I think you, I think you should explain it a little bit better at the last budget meeting. Just what we're looking at, just like Commissioner Morgan's, 23% increase in sales tax revenue, which that sends out warning signs as over.
Yeah, absolutely understand that. I mean, there's an, there's an explanation in the budget, and I'm sorry if I didn't explain it as well as I should have. But again, if I look at the adopted budget from year to year, because that's the capacity, so to speak, in the budget, right? So like, you started this, we started this budget process, and I would say you had an extra, you probably had an extra $80-some thousand, $90,000 of capacity right off the bat because your estimate was so low at the beginning of last year. So it's really important to think about what you're comparing.
And if it helps at all, this table that I did, we've not made, we have not made under $400,000 in sales tax since '21, '19. As of '19 and '20, we made $401, after that, we were $464,000. I'm not sure why that. Knowing the way we check normally did things, he usually went by what we made the year before, which is, I'm not sure where he got that number. And he has some kind of reason to think it's the last number.
And I think, you know, if you're concerned about whether or not we're going to bring that amount in this year, that's a perfectly reasonable concern, and we certainly can identify budget reductions, expenditure reductions to reduce that number by whatever number you think is a better number going forward. In reality, what's going to happen is if we exceed that number that's in the budget, I may come to you in the middle of the year and say, hey, if you really want to do Project X or Project Y, here's a source of funding for it. Or if it's not coming in like we expect, I may come to you and say, hey, you know what? There's been a downturn, things are not coming in like we expected, and here's some recommended adjustments at that time. So, you know, it's, at the end of the day, it's everybody's best guess, and I'm telling you, this is my best guess, so.
Well, I'm going to respectfully disagree.
That's certainly your prerogative.
Based on my research, so.
But I just want to be crystal clear with everyone in here. The budget estimate for fiscal '23-'24 that is in front of you tonight is 8.7% higher than what we received two years ago.
Are we still asking questions?
Yeah, absolutely.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Frank, I don't see any rental income, potential rental income for the PD, current police officer's office. Knowing that you're going to move them in here, I don't see any forecasted rental income.
That is correct, yeah, so it's conservative in that sense. So if we actually do rent it and that revenue comes in, that would be available for the board's use at your discretion.
Is there a reason for not putting any rental income in the budget?
I was just trying to be safe, you know, I'm not really sure exactly if that will happen or when that will happen. I think there's probably a decent chance it will happen, but I just didn't feel comfortable putting it in there, so.
I don't see any extra paving funds being allocated over above the pow bill.
Yeah.
Is that?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct. So there's $90,943 of pow bill funds in the budget right now.
But we have talked about, we, we do know that the pow bill fund is insufficient to keep up with our paving needs.
I believe that it is, yes. And, and so that's something, as I pointed out, I think we need to address going forward. But I would also submit to you, you can't solve every problem at once, and so just trying to chip away at the things that I think need attention, so.
So I don't see any capital improvement projects or any capital outlays, or am I missing some of those?
There are.
Not counting the stormwater, which I don't count, that's the stormwater or the trail.
So there's some capital outlay included in there. There's, you know, for example, there is $15,000 for a bulkhead, there's $15,000 for park improvements. Those are the two most significant things. There's some, there's some.
The $15,000 for the park improvements, is that overall for all parks, or is that in anticipation of the Bahia Lane, using that on the Bahia Lane?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, it's up to the Board of Commissioners. It was sort of a placeholder pot of money so that if the Parks Committee comes to you all and makes a recommendation, it's somewhere where you could go to, to do something. But it's ultimately going to be up to the board.
We didn't get any details with SRO. I think we decided to talk about that at a later date, even though it's going to be a budget issue. When we do discuss it, if we move forward with.
Yeah, I mean, you all can correct me if I'm wrong. My perception from the last meeting is that the board wasn't ready to commit to that just yet, so the budget still reflects our current arrangement where we have our own SRO.
Okay, when do you anticipate starting discussions for that?
I can start them whenever this board would like to. You know, I think realistically, if you want to make that change for this school year, you probably ought to start talking about it sooner than later. I think if you don't make a decision on that by, I'd say, the July meeting, you probably should just plan on the following year if it's a change that you want to make. You, you don't have to stick with that schedule, I'm just trying to think of just a continuity of having the same officer there all year long. So that's my concern. I would want it to be the same person all year.
We need a formal resolution for you to start that process, or we may just.
I think we need to ask Frank to put it on the agenda for next month for discussion. Put it addressed once and for all.
I'm happy to do that if you all would like to.
I would like a closed session personnel on that meeting too. Just to shed some light on something.
That's fine. I'm actually planning a closed session for another purpose, so we'll talk about whatever you'd like.
I had a question on the salaries, unless you're, you got something else?
I got maybe two more things.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll just go, the, the, the simple minimum wage increase that, that I proposed, somehow we didn't discuss that very much, and it got turned into some kind of career enhancement bureaucratic type process. I just wanted to point that out. I did ask for just a simple pot of cash to raise up the minimum wage, just like you would if you was working in McDonald's or the public works in the PD. I just want that out in the public. That's, that's what I asked for.
And, and so I think that $15,000 that is there, if ultimately the board decides to do something like that, that's a source of funding for you all to consider, so.
Just for public knowledge, just in case somebody missed it, our salaries increased to $199,463. Is that correct? On this proposed budget, benefits and salaries.
That's correct, salaries and benefits, yes.
Just putting that out for public consumption.
There is a, there's a 5.3% cost of living increase in there for all full-time employees, except for myself. The bulk of that salary increase is associated with my salary and is also associated with somewhat the planner position, although we converted another position into that, so there's a grand total of about $15,000, $14,000, $15,000 associated with the planner in there, so.
Yeah, I understand, I just, somehow we, sometimes it just needs to be said so the public's aware, you know, even though we have a balanced budget, that's not much, we're increasing salaries and whatnot. And I understand the board voted on everything.
Sure.
Except for the current proposed COLA.
Correct.
Yeah. Just throwing it out for public consumption.
Understood.
I'm finished.
Want one clarification on that. So you're correct that it was $199,000 in the budget book. It's probably going to go down to like $195 or something like that with the changes that you adopted here, so.
So the mileage or whatever, yeah.
Well, yeah, not the mileage, but just some of the other changes that are made there, probably be in the 190 to 195 range, but you're basically correct, so.
You have a question, Joe?
Where's the, this just may be me missing it, but where's the discrepancy between the salaries on the general fund extension or expenditures by category and then the line item? Where am I missing the extra several hundred thousand dollars? The total is 298 on the recommended budget for the line item detail, and what am I not adding in there? And it's 894 on the general by category.
What page are you looking at?
I'm looking at 38.
38, okay. All right, and 38 and 47, that we said?
The recommended budget's 894, 936. When I go over to this line item, subtotal for salaries is 298. Where am I missing the rest of that?
Yeah, so when you look at page 38 and you look at the top by category, that's the entire organization. That's all of the town department. So as an, as an organization, we would spend 890, almost $895,000 on salaries, $394,000 on benefits. On page 47, that's just the administration department. So you need to add together admin and police and public works, and they should tie back to those numbers on page 38.
Frank, go ahead. I'm just going to make one final comment, Bear, I will. I just want everybody to know that, especially Frank and his staff, that I understand it's a stressful time the budget process is. And it is for all us commissioners too. And it is for all us commissioners too. But I'm, I appreciate everything you've done and I don't want you to take it personal when I disagree with you. On any of these issues, but I'm just doing what I feel like is best. The town, I have to ask those questions, those pointed questions. It's nothing personal.
Yeah, I appreciate that and I'm happy to answer.
Stressful, uh, not only for you, I understand, but it is for me too. So.
Yeah. So, um, I want you all to ask any questions you think are appropriate. I'm happy to explain any, everything and anything that I can to you. Um, and I'll do the best I can. Am I perfect? Is our staff perfect? Absolutely not. Do we try our best? Absolutely. Yes.
Can you walk me back through the five point three percent? I know some of that's additional salaries. But is that a five point three percent raise across the board for all staff or is that a portion of that five point three percent part of the additional salaries?
Um, so it, it is a five point three percent increase for all of our current employees, except for me. Um, and so for example, if the person made fifty thousand dollars, you would add five point three percent to that, which would come out to about twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred bucks or something like that. And so just, that's just applied against everybody's current salary.
Okay. So the five point three percent is not a total increase. That's a per person increase.
That's a per person increase. That's correct. And that's consistent with the consumer price index as of March, uh, which is the most recent data that we have.
Historical. Also living increase.
I, I don't know specifically, maybe Heather or, or Sandy will know. Um, I would say this, in my entire career, I have never proposed a five point three percent cost of living increase. But then again, we've never had inflation in the five to eight percent range. So you're seeing pretty much. Most organizations going up actually higher than that. So.
I didn't answer your question. They have fluctuated. One time it was three point five, one time we got two. In the past, we have also had cost of living and merit raises. Um, so it's been different at all times. And then sometimes one year.
And I think it totals forty-five thousand some odd dollars if I'm not correct, uh, mistaken.
I think it's might be a little bit more than that, but it's not too far off. So, you know, so historically like inflation. Prior to the last, what year and a half or so has generally been in the two to three percent range. Um, and most of the time that's what cost of living increases have been in that range, but it's, it's been a crazy time, obviously. So.
So have we accounted for that? We're accounting for. What amounts to a significantly larger. Cost of living increase. Have we accounted for that in our expenditures? Because we're not, I mean. Private citizens are not the only ones affected by inflation. We will be too.
Yeah. So, um, that's all accounted for in the budget. Um, so there is sufficient funding in those appropriation amounts that are recommended for you to cover that and to cover. Our best guess on, uh, projected expenditures for next year. And it's going to be incumbent upon me and the department heads and ultimately you all to make sure we're monitoring those things and we're adjusting if we need to adjust. Going forward, but I feel like it's a, a reasonable approach going forward. Hopefully inflation is going to go down a little bit. Who knows? The, the total cost of the cost of living adjustment is about fifty-four thousand dollars. And that includes the benefits that are percentages of salaries like FICA, Medicare, retirement, 401K. So. When you add it all together, it's right about fifty-four thousand dollars. Think of it, every one percent's about ten thousand dollars, give or take.
Which is equal to about a little over a penny in property tax.
I think, I think that's right.
Put that in perspective.
I think one cent. Generates around forty-four thousand. Right around forty-six thousand. So.
My. My overall concern. Is that. While this is fine now. I don't want us to put us in, I really don't want to be in a position where we. Have to do this. Large increase again, and then we end up having to raise property taxes across the board.
Completely reasonable concern.
The economy goes the direction it looks like it's going. I'm not an economist at all. But if it slows down much more than it already has. I'm afraid we're going to end up in a place where we've got to raise taxes to cover these increases. But. I would like to look at those. Let everybody at least think about those from that perspective. I mean. We do a five point three percent raise this year and then. Next year we do none because we either do that or we don't, we give them nothing or raise property taxes. I mean, it's not a position I'd like to put us in.
I, I think that's the reality of it. And I think you're smart to be thinking in the future as well, but ultimately you'll, you may have to make some adjustments at that time. Hopefully we've got a structurally sound budget and you won't have to have a tax increase. If things change, you may have to cut expenses. You may have to think about a tax increase. I'm always going to try to avoid the tax increase if I can. But that's why we all have to be paying attention and watching closely.
I'd, I agree with Commissioner Morgan on that. Uh, but also my biggest, my biggest problem is we're not doing anything. Significant in our paving efforts or any, you know, we, we don't have a. Replacement plan in place for the police cars. I know we're good for two years. But I think some of the previous boards said the same thing. Then all of a sudden they, they rate our. Hurricane fund, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and buy a whole fleet of police cars. I just don't ever want that to happen again. So I think it, you know, the, the budgets. Sound budget for the most part. But I, it, it, it's all in salaries. And, and, and I don't see anything enhancing. Or paving, number one. And we all commented and you, and you led the discussion that you wanted, your goal was one mile a year.
Correct.
And the power bill is not going to do it. So question is, what are we going to do? Kick the can down the road till next year? What are we going to do here? I mean.
Yeah. So.
It's not going to go away.
I think it's a great question and, and I share your concern. It's just a matter of not being able to solve all of the problems at the same time. And so you somehow you gotta just keep plugging away at it and keep working on it. But like, for example, if you wanted to add another. Eighty-five thousand dollars for street resurfacing, and I'm not suggesting you do this, but for example, this is what your job is. You all make the choices, make the value judgments. You could say no increases for employees this year, and there's fifty-four thousand right there. You could say, we're not going to do a bulkhead. We're not going to do park improvements. There's another thirty thousand. You could take that eighty-four thousand and you could put it towards street resurfacing. And there's no right or wrong answer. It depends on what your values are and what's important. And you've got the responsibility for balancing the entire organization's needs, the entire community's needs. But those are the real trade-offs that you make, right? I can go out and buy a really super duper nice house and ride a bicycle. Or I can buy a house that's not quite as nice and drive a Ferrari, right? It depends on what you want.
So. Remind me again what we're short to get to a mile, eighty, eighty-four thousand.
I, I, I think, you know, for this most recent bid process, we did right about a mile. It's about two hundred and sixteen thousand, give or take. And so with this revised number, there's ninety-one thousand in there right now. Originally recommended a hundred and. Five, give or take. So there's no question at all. There's not enough money in your power bill funds to do a mile worth of street. Um, what I've looked at historically, and you all, please correct me if I'm wrong, some of you have more history. Um, I don't think the town has ever been able to pave. Um, the required amount of streets with your power bill money. And what's typically happened, I think, is you've taken it from fund balance in the future. And that's okay if you're replenishing fund balance. But I would advise against doing that too often because you've basically taken one-time money for recurring expenses. So. Um, it, it really just comes down to what your values are and, and what's important to you.
You said it's ten thousand for every percent, basically?
Pretty much, yeah.
Do you know what? And it doesn't matter because I don't care what they do, but what, just. Have you checked with any of the local, other local municipalities on the COLA? I can't find anything from Cedar Point.
Yeah. So, um. I've got the list here. If I remember correctly, I think Cedar Point was doing six percent. Cedar Point, I think was doing six.
It wasn't in their budget. I didn't see.
So yeah, so I've got the sheet here. If you'll oblige me, I'll pull it out, but, um, I recall that. So here's one thing you gotta keep in mind. In our budget, we've got just a cost of living increase. There are many communities that do a cost of living increase for everyone, and then they also have a separate pot of money for merit increases. And so. Some communities will do nothing but cost of living increase. Some will do nothing but merit. Some will do cost of living and merit. So. That's as you're reading in the paper about other communities, it's important to make that distinction. So we don't have any additional money for merit increases.
We have done it in the past several times.
You may have, yeah. So.
Merit, merit and COLA. And we do have a fifteen thousand dollar podcast for the so-called career.
Correct.
Whatever. Career enhancement or whatever that.
Particularly when you get into the larger communities, um, they've got it set up for like automatic merit increases. And that doesn't ever even get discussed when people talk about it. So just keep those things in mind. Everybody does it a little bit different. I'm not saying one way is right and one way is wrong, just that's important to be cognizant of that. So in the Morehead City. The county, for example, has three percent merit.
Three.
Three.
Yes.
And, and they have nothing for COLA. Morehead City had three percent for COLA, three percent for merit. Pineapple Shores had six point two percent for COLA. Beaufort, five percent. Cape Carteret, of course, five point three. Uh, Emerald Isle, six percent. Cedar Point, six percent. Those were the figures I got from the managers in those communities, probably a couple of weeks ago or so. So I don't know if anything's changed since then, but that was as of, I would say probably around May first. There's a, a survey that was done by the North Carolina League of Municipalities. And so in eastern North Carolina. The low end of the cost of living increases was two percent. The high end was eight point eight and the average was four point four. Um, so that was across the, all of the communities that responded to the survey in eastern North Carolina. And so keep in mind, those are just recommendations from town managers or. Uh, city managers. And so their boards may be having similar conversations that you are. But ours was tied exactly to the consumer price index.
I would ask this board, is, if, if everybody here is stuck on this enhancement, fifteen thousand, or is that something we do without?
I'm good with putting the money back to look at how we are going to do it. I'm not prepared. I wasn't prepared last week and I'm not prepared today to. Look at our salaries. Okay, we're going to haul our minimum wage up to this because as I said last week, I think you gotta look across the board. You can't just look at your hiring salary. You've got to look at, you've got to look at everybody when you do something like that. And I think that's going to take more discussion than just, let's get a bunch of money in a pot and do it tonight. You know, it's just. So I'm good with putting that fifteen thousand back to look at how we do want to do it.
Okay. What about the fifteen thousand dollars for? The Bahia Lane Park. And I know this is early in the game, you know, we've put that money in there several times and never used it. Okay. I know it's early in the game, but the mindset, what's your feeling? Do people understand that quite possibly? We're not going to be able to afford. The park out of town coffers. Go out to do it with grant money?
That's what we've been talking about the whole time. I haven't said anything about.
So why would we put fifteen thousand dollars in there? I'm just asking now.
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So, um, I put the fifteen thousand in there really for one of two purposes. One is to give the committee some hope that they'd be able to accomplish something. And second, it, the other option is if we do apply for a grant, it would be the local match for a grant. So typically they're going to want at least a ten percent local match. Some of them want twenty, some of them want fifty. A lot of the parks and rec ones want a fifty percent match for some of them. So. Um, and it was really, again, it was just a placeholder because it's something that the board seemed interested in, just trying to be helpful. So there's a pot of money there if you want to do something. Ultimately, whatever we spend the money on is going to go through you all.
Well, you see, I, I, I'm just trying to. See what can be diverted to paving. That's, that's, that's my whole goal there.
That's right. Yeah. And, and that's the conversation the six of you, the five of you should have.
The problem is that the amortization. We got to get, I mean, a mile. At the end of the day, we're stretching for a mile right now, but a mile ain't going to cut it. We got twenty miles of roads. And the lifespan on asphalt is not that long.
I, I don't see how the towns made it. This is real. That's the real problem.
A couple of thoughts. I, I was striving for a theoretically a twenty-year life cycle on every segment of street. So that's a mile a year. Might be fifteen, might be twenty-five, twenty's probably a reasonable shot for that matter. Um, I would also submit to you and maybe some folks who've been here longer than I, I'm not sure the towns ever got to a mile in the past. Um, and so it's, again, it, it, it really falls in the category of, okay, I don't know that I can solve this issue right now, but I want to make the board aware of it so that we can keep working on it and try to solve it at some point in the future.
Well. I guess the hope is that, that, that our revenue continues to grow. We're not going to hire anybody else. So we're, we're padded fifteen employees, I would think. I don't see a need for any more employees. So that said, to, to. Basically tighten the purse strings, see where we go, you know? And hopefully our revenue continues to grow and then we can do something next year to enhance our paving efforts.
That was basically what the thought process was, right? So I don't foresee the need for any other positions unless you all have ideas of something you want to do that I don't know about. Um, and so we're just going to have to monitor things and do the best we can and keep working on things. I would submit to you, the street paving dilemma is not unique to Cape Carteret. I think probably most towns have the same conversation you're having right now because the power bill just hasn't been sufficient for just about everybody. So. So we're not unique.
Did the last hurricane, big hurricane cost us?
It was in two thousand eighteen. Um, we can get that number for you.
And I'm curious. How many? Weeks of operating revenue we have in. Does that make sense?
Well, you've got.
I don't need that now. You can do that for the next meeting, but that's just for my, my, my thoughts to see how we progressed in the last six years from there.
Yeah. So actually there's a graph in your packet that shows you the fund balance. And so that's on page. Page number two. On page twenty-two. And so you can see the fund balance, uh, really over the last four years, plus what we're projecting as of June thirtieth of this year. And so, you know. At the end of twenty twenty-two, you're at just shy of two point two million. So you've got more than a hundred percent of your budget, uh, available. And so I would submit to you that, uh, that's very healthy. Um, saying kudos to the town and its leadership for accomplishing that. Um, and then second of all. I think that's, you know, given the historical impacts of the hurricanes we've had here, I think that's more than sufficient to meet your cash flow needs, uh, for a typical hurricane like the ones we've had over the last twenty years or so. So. I think you're in good shape. I mean, that's what that money is there for. I mean, that's what that money is there for. If we have a Katrina or something like that, you know, all bets are off, but compared to what we've experienced, you guys are in good shape.
I just know we got down to just a matter of less than a handful of weeks of meeting.
Yeah.
Obligations.
So back then you had about half what we have now, so.
And wouldn't, God forbid, we have a back-to-back Floyd and Fran and all that other mess, whatever. You were here.
Yeah, I hope we don't have any of those. Hey, I, I, I just, again, given the hurricanes I've been through, which is everyone since Bertha in 1995, you have sufficient reserves available to get us through that in a horrible situation where we somehow didn't. I will say the state has been very good about fronting money to the communities to be helpful to them. I don't know if Cape Carteret looked into that in 2018 or whatever. But like, for example, in, in Emerald Isle, we did some multimillion dollar beach nourishment projects that were several times the size of our annual budget. And the state was very good about fronting the money to get that done for us. So if we find ourselves in a jam, I don't think we will, that would be the first ask is to get them to help us with that. So we'll see. If they didn't, if they couldn't do that, there are other short-term borrowing opportunities available for cities and towns that we would explore. But that's honestly, that's the, really the, the bright spot, the good news in your whole budget is that fund balance is in good shape. So again, kudos to the prior leadership and to the people around this table, so.
For being overly conservative.
Well, it, it, it helps. Look, I, I want to be conservative. I think this is conservative, but it was, that revenue estimate for sales tax was more conservative than I would have been, so.
How long did it, how long did it take FEMA to reimburse us for that 800,000?
Actually, that was kind of a, as a loaded question, they actually paid us some upfront, otherwise we would have had to shut the doors. We did not have enough.
Cooper gave us 500,000 to get, to get the doors open.
And so then.
Makes sense.
I made an agreement with Custom Treat Care, which is the one we paid the most, 542,000 total. They wanted theirs, they were, they were actually picking up 500,000 a week worth of invoices and they wanted it within two days of when they gave me the invoice. So I had a long discussion and they gave me 30 days with each one of those invoices. So FEMA, our state representative really helped us with that. But most, all of this was replaced, I mean FEMA paid for all of it. The problem is usually you don't and we were very unfortunate to get that.
Ultimately, I'm assuming the town got 100% reimbursement from FEMA and the state, yeah, so.
All of this was paid back. The problem is if you don't have, which we are, we do now.
We do now.
Right about a billion dollars in our two accounts, but at that time they did not. That was when I first came and like he said, it was very low.
That's why I've always tried to be overly conservative, Frank. Living through that was not fun.
Understood.
Any more questions? Do we have anybody sign up for public comment? I got you on, on standby anyway. So if y'all like, we'll entertain a motion, we'll go out of public hearing and we'll hear from Ms. Holtz.
I want a motion to go into public hearing.
All right, second seat, all in favor? Would you like to speak, ma'am?
Well, yes, sir, thank you. I just have a couple of questions. I wondered if the commissioner said you can either talk to limited. To limited ramp passes. When I say limited, I mean to people who might need them twice a year in case of a hurricane. And then the others are people who, all over town, who have their boats customarily on lifts and only need to remove them in the event of a hurricane.
I think we gave the town manager permission for that.
Just wanted to confirm, yes, sir, thank you.
Didn't we, Frank?
Right, right, right. Now the.
Kind of emergency to.
That's correct.
Then only today I get a request, as you know, I'm the Chamber of Commerce here. I get a request from a Star Hill resident who said, what about the passes? When do they go on sale or, or how good, how good is, how long is my pass good for? And I said, please check with the town hall. If I'm not mistaken, all the ramp passes that were bought last summer were extended until December. And the question I couldn't answer for him is when will they go on sale again? Okay, thank you, I'll text him. And then.
For town residents and property owners, November 1st, for other towns, December 1st.
Right, I'll, I'll certainly tell him, thank you. But if, if there is a, if there is any movement toward different types of passes, people ask me all the time and I just say, please check with the town. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you.
All right, seeing that we didn't have anybody else for public comment, I'll entertain a motion to go out of public and back into our meeting. Somebody. All in favor? All right, one last time, anybody got any more comments or questions for Frank? Or any of the staff that is present? I came here tonight fully prepared to vote no on this budget. And the reasons that I did come here to vote no for this, this budget is for the lack of paving initiatives increasing, it's bolstering our paving needs and some type of plan to replace the police cars, things like that that needed, I felt like needed to be included in the budget. But sitting in this meeting here, and I was a little upset, we didn't have another budget workshop. But sitting here and listening to Frank explain everything, I've, I've changed my mind, I'm going to vote for this budget. But at the same time, I, I, I'm, I'm just, I think we need to tighten our purse strings this year and talk about what we can do to, to enhance our paving needs. Not wait till next budget cycle to do so, maybe come up with some, some idea, brilliant ideas. And I understand that we've, we've filled a lot of vacant staff positions and our salaries have increased. I understand that. And the board voted 5-0 for every one of those. And I have no problem with that. The COLA is higher than we've, we've ever given, but I think alluded to what Frank said, it's just a sign of times. I'm going to vote yes for this budget if, if it comes to a vote tonight, but I, I asked our town manager to be, to be coming up with some ideas on, on what he foresees the future for the police vehicles and public work vehicles and enhancing our paving needs. And thank you once again for the hard work. I know it's not easy.
No, it's fine, both of those items are on my list anyway, and so we'll do the best we can and come back to you at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Frank. Any more questions? Do you have something? No?
I'm preparing to make a motion.
All right, go ahead.
I'm making a motion that we approve the budget that's been sent in to us by the town manager for fiscal year 23, 24.
That's safe. Okay, any more discussion? Yeah, just to verify that, that budget that Commissioner Miller is advocating, made a motion to adopt, is the new, includes the changes. Yes.
Yeah, it's the ordinance that's in your packet.
Okay. All right.
It's a grand total of, of 2,104,066 for the general fund. And includes a 21 cent property tax rate. And then if the, if the board's inclined, I've got the fee schedule here as well for you to make a motion on if you're so inclined, so.
Any more discussion? All right, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? It's up to those as it is, five of them. Thank you, gentlemen, we'll just go ahead and do about the fee schedule. Have a motion to approve, motion to approve the fee schedule, last second. Second, all in favor? And now we get started on the next question. And that's how we used to do it. It's, it's never-ending if you do it right. And that's where I think this board, we should have, maybe after next month, what does this board like with Commissioner Mark saying in Charlotte, too? It's looking forward, that's where the planning comes from, from us, you know?
Absolutely.
We figure out what, what are the priorities and we, we name them and how we want to try to get some money. Sometimes people have great ideas and maybe, you know, hear from the public about it as well. I think the thing that mayor is, is as the year goes on, if Frank can identify how we stand, maybe six months down the road on our revenue and versus expenses and maybe come up with something as we go through the year, I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm certainly, we'll be watching it monthly and we'll have the reports for you all monthly. And then in January, we'll have a recap of how we did the first six months and talk with you more about your priorities. And certainly along the way, if you have ideas, share them with me, bring them up at a meeting, we can talk about them. You're absolutely right, Mr. Mayor, so.
Eager to see the plan for capital expenditure. Yeah, the plan, the plan for planning for those expenditures in the future. And then I'm also eager to get the sheriff's ball, or talking about the coordination with the sheriff's office, that conversation story.
I, I'll put that on the June meeting agenda for discussion unless you all would tell me not to, but otherwise I'll put.
But just, I mean, just so we're clear, or I'm, so I'm clear, I'm clear. If we do change the SRO, we would be at an additional $50,000 deficit. I mean, we're sitting here trying to make up 125 for paving and we do that, we'd be at another 50 short.
I don't think it was that much, I thought it was 30, 30, so 30 something.
Okay, 30.
Yeah.
Well, let's just do this, I don't want you to do math.
I'll have the numbers for you.
Bring that all, because I mean, I think that's a part of it too, is I don't want to add another expense as we do these things too. Because I, I agree completely with the whole capital outlay, capital improvement projects. I, I do want to have a plan for that.
We're going to have a discussion so that that can either.
Yeah, yes, that's absolutely right, yes.
The, the, the short answer is, and again, it really depends on what you guys want, right? So let's just say that the sheriff's department provides school resource officer services at White Oak in the future. And we give them the grant money and we give them the municipal contributions from Cedar Point and Emerald Isle and all those places. That's a total of about $53,000, $54,000 of revenue. And so if we kept that officer on our force and had him out on the streets patrolling and responding to calls, you're going to have to make up roughly $53,000, $54,000 of, of that revenue. And I'll have, but I'll have the exact numbers for you and break it down, so.
I would just like to commend you, Frank, and the rest of the staff for getting this budget together as precise as you have. No budget is never easy, no budget is ever perfect, but however, coming together, working as a whole to make it workable for all that's involved. And I would just want to say, appreciate you bringing your expertise and your knowledge to our town. It makes it a lot easier. And I do know that with a capital outlay program, which I'm familiar with, will make it easier on everybody's eyes moving forward in what's going to be planning for at least five years at a time. I appreciate you doing that as a whole.
Need more comments? Motion to adjourn. All right, I have a motion to adjourn. All in favor? I'd like to thank the staff for being here tonight. Couldn't do without you guys, awesome job, brother. Assist us.